As we, like somebody sits on, uh, stuff early, it's always.
Yeah.
We're, we're good?
Yep.
Great, thank you. All right, so I'm going to call our regular council meeting to order at six oh one P M. And I will just start with our land acknowledgement statement. The town of Culvers is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. Proud of the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. Um, so we'll now move into the adoption of the agenda. Um, I do believe that we have an addition for, uh, the closed session. Um, what, what are we calling that?
So this will be item fifteen point two, Mayor Montana's rule development under FODS section twenty one.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so with that, can I get a motion to, um, adopt the agenda as amended?
I move we adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any, uh, questions? Any discussion or debate? Call the question, um, all in favor? That's carried, thank you very much. So we don't have any public hearings, so we'll move on to the adoption of the previous minutes. Uh, can we get a motion for that, please?
Sure, I move that we adopt the previous minutes of the September nineteenth regular meeting of council.
All right, so Councilor Ackerman has moved, made that motion. Um, is there any, uh, questions? Discussion? Um, are you ready to vote? Call the question, all in favor? That's carried. I gotta get my, my cadence down, so we'll get there. All right, so we're gonna move on now. Our first, um, item that we have here is the staff report under eight point one Myers Memorial Campground Report. Um, and so we do have the report in front of you. Um, and so maybe I will just turn this over to her, see it. I would just see if there's anything that you would like to, to highlight from this, or if there's anything that, um, you'd like to add besides what's on the, the, uh, report here.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Montana. No, not particularly. This is just a culmination of all the results of the, uh, the reservations and bookings we had at, uh, Myers Memorial Campground twenty twenty three. It gives you a little bit of taste of who our clientele is and some of the comments, uh, that they provided to us. I think all in all, you can see that we attract a wide variety of people from a wide variety of places, which is, which is interesting and exciting, actually. I hadn't anticipated more local flavor, but as you can see, from all across the United States and, and all across Alberta, so that's, uh, that's impressive. So we had itself registered ninety two capers in twenty twenty three.
Great, thank you. Um, so one of the things that I, that I also learned in my, my, uh, course that I went to is that we actually don't need to make motions for anything that is a report. Um, basically, you don't need to make a motion if it is something that you can't say, if, if there's no action. And so we have been in the practice of doing that, so we can continue that way if, if you'd like. Otherwise, we don't need to go down that route. Um, C I O, is there a preference, preference for how we do that right now?
I think it's al, it's always a good idea just to accept it as information. That way it's noted that it was actually covered off in the agenda, right? As opposed to being waiting till the next agenda.
Sure, great. Um, so with that then, can we get a motion to receive report?
May I have one?
Thank you.
And that we, um, receive the Myers Memorial Campground report as presented?
Uh.
For information.
For information.
Presentation? Great, so Councilor Florence has made motion that council received the Myers Memorial Cap, get, Cap Grab Report for information. Um, I will then go to council and ask if there's any questions, uh, about this. If there's not, is there any debate? Uh, seeing none, um, are you ready with a question? Uh, all in favor? That's carried. All right, moving on now. Um, the first thing that we have is the R F D, request for decision for the twenty twenty four Atco franchise fee. Um, and I believe that this was submitted by your Director of Corporate Services, Passy, and, um, I will just turn this over to you to go through that for us.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, each year, uh, the, the companies which we have franchise fees with and franchise agreements with, uh, being Atco and Fordus, one for natural gas and for electricity, uh, they give us the opportunity to adjust our franchise fees. Uh, they send us information of how much, uh, what, what the franchise, uh, fee will look like each year. They give us opportunity to change the, the rate which it's charged. Um, Atco's, uh, came in earlier in the month, um, and so we were able to get something put together. We didn't receive the one from Fordus, uh, until a bit, uh, just this last.
I know, Monday.
Yeah, so, so, uh, while there's not a, uh, an R F D for Fordus, um, we'll, we'll get that. Uh, so the, the Atco franchise fee, um, as, if it, if it remained the same at ten percent, um, we would see a decrease of, uh, a revenue of seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. Um, and so, uh, there's a few option on how, on what that could, what could be done with that. Um, there often would be to maintain it, leave it at that, and take the, the decrease in revenue. Uh, options are to re, increase the rate to maintain revenue rates. Um, and then other options are to, uh, maintain revenue plus an inflationary amount, so increasing the rate a little bit more on top of that. Um, obviously, the, the option to decrease the, the, uh, the, the rate is, is also available. Um, we use the, currently the franchise fees offset general taxation. So any decrease in revenue from franchise fee means it is made up in taxation to maintain levels of service. Um, and so there's a bit of, uh, kind of a different take. When, and often we, we hear that, uh, franchise fees are, uh, a hidden tax or something like that. Um, but, uh, these franchise fees actually get applied to everyone who pays for natural gas or electricity. So there's many, uh, there's some, uh, facilities in town that don't pay property taxes, so we don't collect money from them, um, but they still are using services within town and, and, you know, having infrastructure that leads to them. And this allows, uh, some revenue generated from those properties, so that use electricity, that use natural gas. Um, and so the Atco one we have seen a, 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 a decrease of that seventeen thousand dollars. Um, and so, uh, my recommendation would be to, uh, set the rates of maintain the dollar amount of revenue that the, the town needs to, um, Um, that being said, I don't have a a presentation up here for the Fortis franchise fee. Um, they're projecting at the same rate of uh seven point five percent. Uh, they're projecting that we will actually receive a little bit more in the franchise fee.
Yeah.
And so um with the the idea that I recommend would be to we look at the final dollar amount that between the two franchise fees we want to um generate, which in twenty twenty three we have budgeted with roughly a hundred and fifty, I think a hundred fifty one thousand dollars. Um, and so to maintain that revenue between the two of them uh would mean that the uh the Fortis franchise fee would remain the same at seven point five percent and the Atco franchise fee would increase to twelve point four five percent. Um, that's not, again, it's in the R F D because it this came in just in the last couple days. Um, what that would do i-in the uh in scenario two, you see that the uh um, the increase to average additional customer bill is uh seventeen dollars eighteen cents annually or a dollar forty three per month. Um, at twelve point four five percent, uh, it uh it ends up being I kept with the annual numbers with the monthly month was a dollar eleven, a one dollar eleven cents monthly. Um, increasing the the Fortis franchise fee has a much larger impact on the monthly or the annual rate that comes into uh on the residence bills. And so this one, increasing the Atco one rather than the Fortis one, uh, allows the amount to stay the similar into what customers will be seeing on their uh on their utility bills through through their natural gas provider, electricity provider. Um, I think that's all I have to say on those, so I'm happy to answer any questions you can make.
Maybe if I might just uh sit down a little bit. So Mike is right that we just received the Fortis piece, which was very late, unfortunately. Uh, when we originally looked at this, we were very much in unison in in terms of scenario two uh to maintain that revenue balance, the revenue balance from where we are in twenty twenty three does mean does not mean a loss of revenue, does not mean an increase of revenue through our gas franchise fee. You will note on page twenty one of your forty three page agenda that there's actually uh a culmination of all the municipalities that are applying franchise fees through Atco and what those percentages are. You will also notice that Culvers at ten percent is one of the very lowest of all of those municipalities. So while it's Mike's correct, it's often referred to as hidden tax. Um, this really the franchise fees put in place as a makeup for allowing those utilities to place infrastructure within your municipality essentially. So it does it's not a free ride, I guess, is what I'm trying to explain. Um, the ten percent and the seven percent, seven point five, those are very low rates in in comparison to most suburban municipalities. So I I don't feel there's any need to reduce this, but I do think it would be incumbent upon us to at least, especially if we go through inflationary periods like we're in, to maintain that revenue generation without adding to it and adding extra burden to the utility payers. So we have to be conscious of that as well. So Mike and I agree that scenario two is probably the most appropriate approach to take, which would really be a revenue neutral approach for the Atco franchise fee.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna I'm gonna break my order a little bit here, but I am going to ask council if there's any questions on this before um I see if there's a motion that like you made.
One, thank you. Um, did they give any rationale for why um that same percentage would result in a decrease in revenue? Is it is it sort of a a decrease in a customer base or people moving to different stations?
Actually, a decrease in the in the gas price is reflective.
Wow.
Yes. So actually, gas rates have gone down just a little bit, and so that's reflective and that's that percentage. That percentage uh on that fee structure is related to that cost. So as those prices go up, we gain more as the price goes down, we gain less. So this is the projected revenue for twenty twenty four um that would implement in January typically. Uh, if we go, we also do have an advertising process we have to meet, which is a challenge with a late information like Fortis has sent us, uh, which will challenge us a little bit, but we'll have an R F D for the next meeting for that. But Mike is quite correct that if if Fortis's rate is looking fairly revenue neutral without any change, that makes life a lot easier and we're not required to advertise that. This we will, if there's any chance, we have to advertise twice consecutive weeks and have that information into actual prior to November first, so it could be submitted to the upper utilities commission.
Great, is there any other questions? Uh, Councilor Florence, go ahead.
Thank you, um, just a question for the C E O through the man. Um, so does that, does it, does it, oh my goodness, sorry. Um, so at twelve point four, does it include the five percent C P I increase? That's referenced in scenario three. Okay, so this is just what's needed to maintain revenue.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any further questions? Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, just looking at this, would it be possible to almost look at this at the same time as as we're looking at the, what was, uh, for the electricity and the Fortis franchise fees? Just so we can kind of see the numbers in comparison, I guess. Um, yeah, if we can look at them as a whole and see what that will do with tax base, just to see. Because if the other one's gonna be increased revenue, this one's be based.
Mm-hmm.
If I might, um, I would much prefer not to do that. You know, it would be easier to advertise them both together because we can't get Fortis on the council agenda till October seventeenth. We have fourteen days to advertise two consecutive weeks and put that information to Fortis prior to November first. We're very much gonna be up against the wall on that particular franchise fee. So when we looked at it and determined that it was almost revenue neutral maintaining the existing percentage of seven point five, uh, Mike's recommendation of scenario two would really keep us very close to revenue neutral with both of those franchise fees combined. Uh, it it's true, Fortis would see a slight increase in revenue, but nothing substantial. Um, so our recommendation will likely be that we maintain the existing rate. We don't have to advertise at that one, we don't have to contact the A U C. So this is likely the only change you're gonna see proposed from administration for a franchise fee for twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
Did Mike?
No, that's, yeah, same thing.
Um, is there any other questions? If not, I'm wondering if someone would like to make a motion on this?
I can make that motion.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I have a motion that we accept the administration's um recommendation to um to increase the franchise fee rate to thirteen point one five percent to maintain the revenue generated by the franchise fee. And I appreciate that, I do that in acknowledgment that this this revenue has been decreased because of the decrease in price of the actual gas. My hope is that the residents don't see a my expectation then is I don't see an increase on the bill, an overall increase.
Well, the projection is a dollar forty three a month for the average customer.
Yeah, but if we're seeing a decrease in that revenue based on a lowered price of gas price, the overall bill in and of itself should not have an increase then.
And if I might, Mayor Montana, I also want to point out that these projections are provided by Atco. They're not provided by your administration. They provide us with a cost uh sharing spreadsheet. And we can put in whatever numbers we'd like to see, whatever revenue we'd like to see out of it. And obviously, if the projections are close or bang on, then that's exactly what we see. There's also, there also is some opportunity for the fee to go up or down or the revenue to go up or down based on market price and commodity issues.
Great. So Councilor Caldwell um has moved the council to increase the franchise uh fee rate to thirteen point one five percent to maintain the revenue generated by the franchise fee. Um, I'm now going to open it up to council if there's, um, if anybody would like to speak um in opposition of this. Go ahead, Councilor Florence.
Um, and I would just like to amend or do an affirmative amendment to the twelve point four five that administration has recommended, not thirteen point one five. So in R F D, it says thirteen point one five, but from what our Director of Corporate Services is saying, it's actually twelve point four, twelve point four five? Am I getting that correctly?
With uh through the marriage of Councilor Florence, through through the the additional revenue that be projected by Fortis's franchise fee at current, meaning that at current, that is current rate, uh, we wouldn't need to raise the Atco franchise fee to thirteen point one five to maintain that same overall franchise fee revenue. I would only need to go up to like twelve point four five, although my my system isn't I can, that's not kind of my laptop, so I haven't ever pulled the exact like me is that, that twelve point four five.
Okay, to maintain this double, stable revenue.
Overall, overall, complete franchise fee revenue. Thirteen point one five percent on the Atco franchise fee would um and if the fourth number stayed the same, there'd be, you would be generating a slightly little bit more uh protecting more revenue than than maintain, you would generate a little bit more than was supposed to be the, to maintain that dollar amount.
Okay, so we have a, I guess in this case it would be a a secondary motion. Thank you for.
You know, I I I can accept, can I not accept it as a firm amendment as you did?
Technically, you can't, but but we can today.
You know, I I thank you for bringing that to my attention because my overall goal was to maintain the stable um revenue generated by franchise fees.
So um just to restate the the this then, then it should be twelve point four, is that correct?
Twelve point four five.
Twelve point four five.
And I think this brings us close to um essentially what Councilor Ackerman was asking as well, is to be able to sort of compare the two to see what we can um ensure that we're not making too much revenue and we're not losing revenue, right?
Excellent. Um, are we have any other suggestions?
I'm just trying to refer to remember, we only saw the spreadsheets yesterday, so.
Okay.
My internet is slow here too.
Yeah.
Um, okay, is there any other discussion on this? So the the motion is for the twelve point four five. Is there any further discussion?
Um.
Go ahead.
So we we know that um scenario three is looking at a um inflationary amount of five point zero two percent. Um, potentially coming up in our budget discussions. And uh and so um while I think I commend council's decision to maintain the status quo, I I think um yeah, and I know we don't, we haven't, don't have a decision on what franchise fee or the C P I um increase might be. Um, I I am curious uh if if that might be an option as well to look at. Um, and I'm wondering, since this number obviously reflects something else that was then was presented to us, that if I would, I would like to request administration comment on what scenario three would look like.
Please go ahead.
So if it might be before we do that, just so you understand what the Fortis, if we maintain seven point five for Fortis, it is just under four thousand dollars additional revenue. So you know, it's not a large chunk of money, so. So let Mike answer the last question on that, if you might need this.
Yeah. An option on my mind, so. Uh, so the the overall franchise fee revenue that that uh that we collect is a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars, a hundred fifty one two seventy five. So if I had a that's average C P I amount, uh, the five point zero two percent would be a hundred and fifty eight thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Um, I have to open up their franchise fee calculator, which I can do to figure out what that number would look like. Um, but it's it's a.
If you use a five percent, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, we can figure out what the what the rate would be to to get the those the those dollars.
Um, well, it's gonna be just under eight thousand dollars, which is about double what we would see in additional revenue if we maintain the seven point five for Fortis and move to the thirteen point one five. But Atco is in the middle, so you'd be looking at about two point seven five.
Percent?
Yeah, as opposed to five percent. If if you use thirteen point five for Atco and maintain seven point five for Fortis, sorry, the round numbers in my head, who am I gonna drive and create the order?
Do you need a a couple minutes, Mike? Do you wanna have a short recess?
We do, we're gonna be.
Yeah, okay, we got.
Then I'm not sitting here giving.
Yeah, let's just have a, let's just have like this five minute recess, okay?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that, and then you can find the information for us.
Thank you.
We're gonna have a larger agenda. We don't have a larger jam.
All right, so you found information, um, so I'll, I'll just let you speak to that, please.
Yeah, so to add a, a inflationary, uh, average CPI of five percent onto, um, the overall franchise fee revenue would generate a hundred and fifty eight. On thousand eight, a hundred and fifty eight and eight seventy, um, it would leaving the Fordus franchise fee at seven and a half percent. And increasing, uh, increase the actual franchise fee to thirteen point eight percent. Um, and that would, that would end up, uh, projections being an annual, uh, increase to the, uh. To, uh, average residential customer's bill of twenty dollars per year or a dollar seventy three a month.
Great, thank you. All right, um, so we still have this, this motion from Counsel Colville, so, um, is there any further? Discussion before, um, I call the question?
I, I was, I was wondering, um. So they predicted, they predict a lower price and administration has advised that because they. Price of gas has gone down, um, and with the, uh, fortus, fortus rate going up slightly predicted, um. And, you know, in context with the whole, uh, cost of living increase that we saw in the last year. Um, and a lot of people anecdotally have talked about how high their utility bills are, um. You, you know, it seems, I don't, yeah, anyway, I really don't understand that, so. That's a disconnect for me in my, in my head, I don't understand it, so, um, I'm not sure I have, anybody can answer that for me, but. I'm, uh, yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm thinking about right now, really. Why, why, how can, how can? If, if, uh, you know, things are inflating, uh, is gas electricity not inflating with that? Or are they just, you know, gas is going down apparently, um, electricity is going up apparently? So.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, and I'm not a commodities expert, please understand. I do know that I'm about to renew my electric contract for the next five years. And the consumable rate for electricity is more than doubling what my previous contract was. So you're going to probably see that seven point five percent in the future. Carrying considerably more revenue than it is today. And at that point, to maintain revenue neutrality, if that's what council decides, that you may want to lower that rate as that happens. There's obviously to be more pressure on the electric consumers as I move on, so. I sense about the best way I can explain it, um, yeah, well, thank you for that.
Counsel Florence, did you want to speak?
Um, yes, thank you, um, it's, I guess, I guess I'm, I'm for this, um, and I'm, I'm not quite sure, um, definitely I'm not sure if we're speaking against it, but. Just in regards to a, like, a conversation about, um, a potential increase is a conversation we haven't had yet. So I'm not comfortable basing a rate on something that we haven't, that hasn't been decided yet, and so that's why I support the twelve point four. Um, and as well, I, I think it's important, um, to, that utilities pay for themselves and that, um, it, it not be needed from taxation to support that. Um, as well being super cognizant, like you stated, that, um, the cost of everything is going up and so that we're keeping the, the costs as low as possible. Um, while maintaining, um, the services and, 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 you know, um, balancing budgetary needs, so. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not sure if I'm for this either. I'm trying to.
Um, is there any further discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mary. Just wanted to add a comment. Um, with cost of living going up overall for everyone, it makes it tough, like modern loans wages are going up, so I'm inclined to keep it, um. Kind of revenue neutral, so the twelve point four five percent is preferable to me versus increasing it above that level.
Great. All right, if, if there's no further discussion, so again, Counselor Colville, um, has moved that council increase the atco franchise fee rate. To twelve point four five percent, um, and I do believe that it's kind of stated that it was to keep it.
Twelve point four five is about.
Um, revenue neutral, um, so with that, um, are you ready for the question? Um, all those in favor? Um, that motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so the next one that we have here, um, is a request for decision against submitted by Director of Corporate Services. Um, for the twenty twenty two surplus allocation and, um, I'm going to turn this over to our administrative team, um, or whoever would like to speak to this.
I'll, I'll let him take this.
Uh, so in, in, thank you, in previous meetings, we've kind of mentioned the surplus here and there and looking what, what could be done with it. Uh, so at the end of twenty twenty two, there was a surplus of approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, we don't currently have a policy that allows how, how those ones are allocated each year, um, and so there's. A few options that council can take at this time to, to allocate that, um. The other option is at this point is to not allocate it, it's, it's sitting in what's called the, uh, uh, the accumulated surplus, and so it's just, it's just. Um, the funds that are just, the revenues over expenses that are just extra over portion time. Now, so a couple of options, we'd allocate the surplus to all existing reserve by proportional value or allocate them to specific reserves, um. Uh, one option would be creating an RCMP subsidy reserve, um, to mitigate the impact of increased RCMP costs. Um, that replaces the funds to the general reserve from the twenty twenty two personnel matter, and other options to fund one-off projects or initiatives. Uh, I'll, I'll speak to the, uh, the RCMP subsidy reserve one, um, just that. Uh, in the last few years, the town coalers have been required to, um, pay for RCMP services to the province, uh, whereas up until twenty twenty. Um, the province was taking care of those costs, um, and so as it has increased, um, this is just a way to help mitigate that increase. And for twenty twenty four, we're looking at, uh, our, our contract for twenty twenty three was a hundred and, well, a hundred thousand dollars, around there. Uh, for twenty twenty four, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and so there's a, there's a jump in the amount that has to be part of the contract. Uh, we have been using, um, there was, before my time, there was, there was some taxing for what was coming in the coming years. There's been kind of some subsidies that have already been used to mitigate that impact and, and the increase of that. Um, and so this would just be setting a, uh, amount that could go into reserve and, and have that mitigate, that increase mitigated over a number of years. Uh, and as far as the proportional value of allocating surplus, you know, that's a percentage based on which ones have, you know, if, if, if. One, uh, reserve has seventy percent of the reserve balances, then it gets seventy percent of the surplus allocated to it or something in, in that nature. So there's, there's an infinite number of ways to allocate it to as many as, as ideas that someone can come up with, um, and so. Uh, we were having a conversation today about what that RCMP, um, subsidy reserve would look like. And again, there's various ways of, of allocating funds to that, of, of how long, um, that's, that mitigation would go on for, um. But there's always going to be a, a, a point in time where that number has to, the tax order to cover that and has to jump at some point. Um, so it's how, what was an acceptable jump and what's, uh, what can be, so without overtime. Um, then there's the idea of just replenishing funds that have been used into reserves that don't have, um, or punishment program. Um, or they'll have funds that are allocated to it through the operating budget, um, do you have any questions on that?
Does anything else in the general operating?
We have a, we. It's not called that, but we have, we have a general reserve that was used for the personnel matter.
Great. Uh, my last ask, uh, counsel, if there's any questions, uh, Counsel Florence, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, I got two questions for administration through the mayor. Um, first one is, what is the current amount of the general reserves and then following that up, the, um, RCMP subsidy reserve in the balance of irons? Eighty seven thousand five hundred is listed as administrative recommendation. Can you just speak to where that number came from?
So I think we determined today that number is a level off, correct?
Yeah, depending on how we want to, how we handle.
So council is aware that twenty twenty three RCMP contract for coal reserves was a hundred thousand dollars, correct? It jumps next year to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And in the past couple of years, council has been offsetting, offsetting that expense, player reserve contribution. So essentially, and I think I'm free to say this, um, we actually over collected for that for a couple of years and then have been subsidizing. That contract cost for the last two years of reserves, so we have not been taxing appropriately for that for moving forward. And you started to say, so that's why Mike is proposing maybe even RCMP. Uh, reserve, we determined that after twenty twenty three, there would actually be, we would be balanced in terms of what we over collected and what we subsidized. Otherwise, if there was a reserve set up, we would have used it more for that. Which also means we have to increase the budget, the operating expense budget, fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty four to. Make up that extra fifty thousand that we're going to be charged next year. So Mike has proposed that as one option that we put this surplus or some of this surplus as council wishes. Into a reserve fund to soften that, to allow us three or four years to slowly increase the, uh, the taxes. To get up to that one fifty mark, so it's not such a hard hit. The council's information that fifty thousand dollar represents about a two percent increase to taxation.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mike, you should just let him bring that up, but we expect to speak a couple of hours to be talking about it.
Um, and, and the, uh, general reserve, uh, at the end of twenty twenty two had, uh, ninety thousand dollars at that time.
Uh, Counsel Florence?
Thank you, just a question for the mayor to administration, um, just to clarify the, the previous question. So, um, when we talk about the RCMP subsidy amount, it's, it's, that reserve is listed at possible one eighty seven five hundred. But the, the surplus amount is, is higher about, it's two twenty, so I guess, um, I didn't really get the answer, but how was that number decided? So we got fifty thousand for next year as it goes up to one fifty, is it going to continue to go up by fifty thousand dollars every year or will it stay at one fifty? Um, and so just, just to clarify that, that again, if, if you may.
Yeah, through the, Counsel Florence, um, a hundred and fifty thousand is roughly where they projected that it would kind of stay at. Um, I anticipate there will likely be some inflationary additions, that's why we're talking a hundred and fifty three, a hundred, next year a hundred and fifty four, a hundred and fifty seven, and that kind of thing. Um, but I don't have any concrete answer on that, but the hundred and fifty area is where, uh, we expect it to kind of taper off. Um, the, where that number came from was, uh, by, uh, in a, in a, uh, exercise I did to say. Okay, in twenty twenty four, we'll use sixty two thousand five hundred to offset that and then decreasing it by twelve thousand five hundred dollars each year. And that goes through till twenty twenty nine, so it's a long, a long period of that, but it ends up, it has an impact on taxation of only needing to require, uh, twelve and a half thousand dollars. To move that at each point. That's a long time, we're talking, twenty nine is, you know, a long way. It's also not that long away, but it, you know, it's kind of those relative, uh, time things, um, but it's, uh. There's various ways that that could be administered, whether it's, uh, a twelve thousand five hundred dollars each year, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, whatever it is, would be that we would set that those funds. Um, that reserve to do those, those portions each year and have that impact hidden each, each one, um, and like the, uh, CA said, um. And, and as it currently stands, for every twenty five thousand dollars, um, uh, of additional taxation dollars needed. Is about a one percent increase to the mill rate, so at twelve and a half thousand dollars, you're looking at a half percent of a mill rate. That needs to be added for solely, um, RCMP increase costs.
So this is, if I might, this is really a budget conversation, so for today, we really just need to allocate this, this surplus from twenty twenty three and. You could really put it in anywhere you like and council, as you know, by a resolution, couldn't move reserve funds just by motion, right?
Do you have a question? Actually, no, no, for my.
Question?
Um, you know, thank you for that answer. I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you've been thinking about as far as twenty twenty nine and then that plan, so I really appreciate that. I did have one more question about, um, the, the reserve, um, through, through the mayor to administration. So when we, when we call a reserve something, like we call it the RCMP subsidy reserve, um, I know you just said we can transfer money around, but. Is that limiting then it's only for RCMP, so would it be? Would it be beneficial to have it be broader, like something like emergency services, so if needed, it could access something else or is it just a name and it's?
Uh, through the administration, Counsel Florence, it, it's, it's really up to council on that, on that one. Um, the, there's things called restricted reserves and underfused reserves, and there's things even of external restricted reserves, so. We could call it a restricted reserve where it's RCMP only, but there's nothing that restricts it except that motion, council. Um, and so there's other external restricted reserves, which would be things where there's a legislative reason that these funds can't be touched, uh, offset levies. That's the big one, um, but if it, if it's set in reserve, it, it's, uh, it's up to council to, to, to say where that goes and what that is applied to. Uh, if, if today council says, yeah, set a reserve for the, uh, the RCMP subsidy reserve, um, and we set that, we put those funds in there and, and each budget year we come and say. Hey, this is how much we're going to use from this budget this year, and council can say, well, fund this project out of that reserve and. So it is, uh, so it's, it's up to council to, to say what that could be used for, um, but it can only be spent once, once it's spent, it's gone.
So you can also just put it in an, an undedicated operational reserve with no name. And you could utilize it at your discretion without having a motion to move money around from one reserve to council another.
It could all go, all go into the, the general reserve and then we, each year we say, hey, this is, we want to subsidize policing by this much less by. And you are using a reserve for this much and then it gets done that way, but, uh, it's, it provides you a lot more flexibility, honestly.
Um, we'll go to the mayor and then Counsel or Colville.
Um, so I am curious, uh, if, um, administration has any information about how often we get a surplus and then what, uh, um. What if we, and, and I know this is, we don't have any history in our, going back years and years, maybe Counsel Colville will have the answer to this. Uh, so, um, so it's great that we have surplus, something, right? This is good news, uh, first of all, really, uh, yeah, so. And, and, and I guess we don't have any policy that dictates what we do with it, right?
Yeah, I, if I may, it's been typically more practice and that's what it's been, it's been a distribution amongst reserves typically in the past. But we don't always say that it is a good thing that we have surplus because sometimes it means that there's been things that we planned for that were left undone. Right?
It's better than deficits.
And I think you're right, but, but I guess that's, and I guess that was more to my point and I don't know where we are in the debate portion or bringing forward.
We're just saying questions right now, so if you have any questions over the, the information presented.
Okay, before you repeat it though, I would like to, I would like to have a discussion about what, what some other thoughts are.
Okay, we don't have a motion at, at this point in time though.
Thank you.
If I may, uh, to the mayor and council, um, the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of surplus is about, it's about three point six percent surplus. Um, so our, our operating budget is about, is just under six million dollars, so a surplus of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars really isn't, it's not a huge surplus. Um, if, if, you know, we're looking at under four percent, if our surplus goes, you know, ten percent of that, then maybe that, okay, something's, something's, something's off here. But to be, you know, within ninety five percent of our, of our budget is actually, we're, we're pretty close, um, so I, this isn't, this number isn't, uh. Uh, a surplus that I'm looking at and saying, hey, you know what, you really need to tighten up or really need to be, you know, watched and, and this is actually pretty, pretty good. Um, you know, this is, this, this, these numbers, depending on if something happened. Um, you know, this is this, this, these numbers, depending on if something happened in the year, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is going to spend really fast and we're going to be running a deficit. So part of the, part of the surplus then sits in in that uh, the accumulated surplus. Where if there is a deficit, that helps mitigate it or we just have, our accumulated surplus just decreases. And so I would, I would agree that's part of a surplus policy where that, where that unrestricted accumulated surplus should be sitting at. But uh, we don't want to allocate every single penny out of it because if we run a deficit, the these funds can help cushion uh, that each each year.
Um, do we have a, do we currently have a reserves for our wetlands project? We've said, said reserves for different kinds of things, but I'm wondering if we have something for wetlands project.
The mayor and Councilor Caldwell, we do not have a specified wetlands project reserve.
Go to the mayor.
Um, so so for example, if we allocate this to general reserves, uh, is is there some sort of uh, mechanism that would be required to say like, you know, say there was a motion that would be something like, you know, put this in general reserves in a GIC for the year or something until next year, next budget or something? Is it, is, is that something?
No, if if I might, I would, I would not recommend that. While we have a lot of cash assets, they have to be a little mobile because we don't have just one D I C. For instance, we've got term stopping and starting all the time. Uh, we'd want council to start dictating when or where we put money in and out of investment accounts. Um, it really does depend on when they fall and when they come do that kind of a thing, right? Um, plus, if you ever need that money and you've got a lot now, you're hamstrung yourself, right? So we try to keep them in multiple investment accounts so that our liquidity is available if we need it throughout the year, right?
Correct, Councilor Florence?
Can I formally have that conversation?
I'm just starting.
Thank you, um, just another question through the mayor to admin, um, just regarding um, Mike, the, your last comments about um, about the the policy and not designating it all. So like, for administration, is it, like, is it best practices to have this policy? Or is it preferable to not have this policy? Because I guess I've been really hung up on this idea of having this policy in place, um, just so that we have a process for what to do. But but it sounds like based on this conversation that it it really could go either way. Um, and so I guess I was wondering what's what's administration's preference, um, or what would be best practices?
Through the mayor and Councilor Florence, i- if there's, some initiatives have these policies, some don't. Um, and so I don't, I don't, I I think it's a good thing to have because then it's, then there's um, there's, there's direction built in of what to do with with these funds. Um, and so as part of the policy, I would uh, recommend having a a portion that says the unrestricted accumulated surplus should sit at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that money is sitting there and then so whenever there's a surplus, that's the first thing that's that's replenished, that that unallocated uh, the unallocated uh, accumulated surplus, the unrestricted accumulated surplus. Um, and so that's, that's over that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's that, that's zero, that for that that balance of that, will then be allocated to um, the various reserves. Our our unrestricted accumulated surplus right now is is over a million dollars. And so there's room to allocate some of those funds to reserves and and various initiatives as as council would like. And I would bring that as part of um, uh, when this policy is kind of more put together and say, hey, where does council want to see these funds allocated to?
So if I might, and and this this can be a much longer conversation, I'd rather probably didn't be at this point. It's something we can discuss at budget though. What Mike's really talking about is almost tax stabilization uh, to some degree. And and I can tell you, there's a lot that agree with that and there's a lot that absolutely do not agree with that because you're pre-taxing people. Uh, people move in and out of the community, if you pre-tax them to have fun to pull taxes down and then they leave, they're really going to see the benefit of that too. So there's a lot of schools of thought on that principle. Really, um, I think in this case, I I would really just allocate this to unrestricted, to an unrestricted operating reserve and then you can allocate it when and wherever you would like as you move forward. Instead of trying to pigeonhole that time, really leave yourself open. Put it into an unrestricted operating reserve. Um, we can then have an entire conversation about reserve council, what reserve balances we should have and we can potentially move somewhere out at that point.
Can I, may I ask about that, the uh, unrestricted? Would that not be the same as general reserve?
Same.
Yeah, so so then to replenish funds to general reserve with this right now, with the understanding that it can be moved based on budget conversations and so on.
That would be my recommendation, honestly.
All right, if there's no further questions, um, would somebody like to make the motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
Sure. What would you like the motion to be?
Um, I would like to move that council allocates the twenty twenty-two surplus, um, is it one hundred and eighty-seven thousand?
Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, well, the one eighty-seven five is, okay, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so to the general reserves.
General operating reserve.
Uh, I think it's just called general reserve, I don't think it's specifically operating, that's just general reserve.
You split it that way?
They aren't, as of the act.
Well, it should be, but we'll have that conversation too, I guess, okay?
We will, until now, we know it's operating or capital projects.
And and of course, uh, council understands too, Mike, not, I'm sure, but Mike and I are going through a budget process together, so very much kind of all put off the walls and trying to stay in the middle right now, but it's working out quite well, so I think we share a lot of similar philosophies and have to go forward with that council's philosophy to decide that budget, so I think this is a good maneuver.
All right, so the Councilor Caldwell has moved that the council allocate the twenty twenty-two surplus to the general reserve. Um, Mike, I think you just need to add that on there. Um, now I will open it up for debate. Uh, would anyone like to speak um, against this, in that position? Would anybody like to speak for it? Councilor Florence?
Sorry, I think I'd like to speak um, against this, just in the sense that I would, I would want to propose an amendment or or propose an emotion afterwards, but I would still like to see um, that the surplus policy brought back to the committee of the whole meeting. And I would like to do a motion as well about the reserves, um, so that we have a conversation about the reserves that relate to to budget time. Not just about putting much into this surplus, but that we have a conversation about the reserves that relates to the twenty twenty-four budget discussions. Um, and then also that we have the surplus policy and have it brought back.
Okay.
Because I think what we're looking at, and when we talk about this, the large amount to our unrestricted reserves, there should be a policy for that. And so um, I would like to see a policy for that.
Okay.
If I might, I'd appreciate that you don't put a timeline on that because you won't be allocating surplus again until this time next year, so. You know what I'm saying?
Right, I I do get that, and I think that moving forward, I still think it would, it would, like, one of the things, if I mean, that Mike, what the Director of Corporate Services was indicating is that even with our reserve accounts, is that, you know, we have a large amount to the unrestricted reserve account and if it goes above seven fifty, that we should be then designating that out of unrestricted to the other reserves, am I understanding that correctly?
There's no, there's no hard and fast rule of.
It's it's a, it's a consensual idea to 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 have funds available.
Yeah, well, and I guess just, and further to that, I guess it's with the conversation about having the RCMP subsidy reserve because I think that's an important and well thought out plan, and so I would like to see that happen. So when we're talking, okay, well, now we're just going to move it into the general re- reserve, we're not allocating it specifically, but we know there's already a lot of money in the general reserve, so it'd be nice to have a conversation about those general reserves and allocate from there. So that we can accomplish both of these things.
Absolutely.
Kind of thing.
You don't need a policy to do that, you can just do that.
Just do it? All right, let's do it.
And 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 I'm always a little leery to provide counsel with policy that's really just going to constrict your decision-making process, right? Um, this conversation, the conversation we just had about buffering the impact of the RCMP contract amount increase, uh, we can have that during budget discussions, you can allocate out of that reserve to complete that buffer without having a policy in place to do so.
Yeah, okay, okay, that makes sense. Um, I guess it's just, there's, and if I, sorry, can we carry on? If there, I guess it never seems to be an opportunity to talk about reserves. And so that's why, just in an effort to make sure it comes back, but I, but I do hear what you're saying, that it can can happen at any time. Um, so I appreciate that, thank you.
I will say, we're lucky to have a conversation about what we do with our reserves. That's a good thing.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilor Caldwell?
And I, and I think if I could, I would actually like us to have a motion that we do look like, look at a surplus policy or perhaps a procedure about it. Not have maybe a timeline, I think maybe get through this budget. But this is something that has to be intentional and deliberate and not left gents. Because we talk about talking about our reserves, we talk about it and we actually have never had. And I'm not sure that budget time is the time to have those conversations because we're already really locked into sort of budget. It would be nice if we had those conversations and where we could, where we could set out, okay, we need to have reserves specific to these things. Uh, some of this part infrastructure stuff, we're very, very good at setting those reserves. But, yeah, but we're not having conversations. So I don't know if there's perhaps not locking us into a specific policy about um, about what it looks like, what we do with our reserves, but perhaps some policy around that intentional conversation. Right, there's some pre- procedure around that intentional conversation so that we can do it with deliberation. And I don't know if I'm getting too far in this thing, I'm understanding if I might through Mayor Montana.
I think what we really need to have is deliberate conversation of both of uh, well thought of and constructed long-term capital plan, which would allocate those reserves to to specific targets, which we are lacking a little bit right now. And I think that now it would look intentional as opposed to unintentional.
I hear that, thank you, yeah.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Thank you, um, I think the policy is a great idea, however, I think that the discussion about the reserves is important when it comes to budgetary deliberations because if we're looking at allocating funds to the different reserves, it would be kind of nice to have an idea of what, where you're at and how we can allocate them appropriately. I understand I'm not going to reinvent the wheel before the end of this budgeting season, but I think it is important to know kind of what's funneling where and how we're looking in the grand scheme of things, when we do have those conversations.
Is there any further discussion? Not, so the motion is that Council Caldwell will move, the council allocate the twenty twenty-two surplus to the general reserve. Um, are you ready for the question? Um, all in favor? That's carried.
So may I then um, put forward another motion?
Sure.
Um, so I move that council direct administration. Sorry, I'm just.
I'm, I'm learning, I'm learning.
You're doing good.
I move that council direct administration to develop a surplus policy and bring it back to a committee of the whole meeting at a later date.
Might I suggest you pick a later, pick a date?
Pick a date?
Like, something into the future, like, you know, whatever that might be, just something that's a little more.
Can we do, um, let's do April of twenty twenty-four? Just because I think that if we're looking at getting someplace for for future years, it's not necessarily this year.
So bring it back to the, the whole, by April twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before we restate it, may I uh, request a friendly amendment?
Sure can.
Thank you, so I'm wondering if we want to put within that um, uh, sort of a capital plan to to determine um, sort of the surplus, surplus allocations? Determine where we're placing them, so tie it into the capital plan?
Yes.
Right, so that we, we have a capital plan going forward, we know that we put X amount of dollars or surplus into each reserve so that we know, we have a very deliberate approach to how we're going to accomplish this project.
How, how would you like to change the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so I told you what what I meant.
I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying, and I'm struggling with how to word that too, so like, developing, but I mean, as part of the, I don't want it to be too vague to you either because we inevitably require to have a capital plan, right? So um, to develop a, like, would it help to say to develop a reserve surplus policy, like a general, or like a?
I think that would be a change.
Would that make sense to administration? If it was a reserve surplus policy or is it, it's more to do with the, because now we're kind of shifting into reserve surplus and not budget surplus?
Yeah. Maybe a reserve policy to direct surplus?
Well, if if I might, it's not uncommon to have a reserve policy. Uh, I have not seen a surplus allocation policy, but I have certainly seen multiples of uh, reserve policies developed that might dictate the amounts or the coverage you want in reserve accounts or what this contributes to operational revenues or any number of things, so. So I would suggest you leave it early at that because you, again, you can allocate these things, right? And I'm just conscious of council not putting themselves into a position where we've got to change policies, we want to do this, leave yourselves some flexibility, right? I think what you want to do is, is have some intention with your reserve allocations and that, I think that the policy could achieve that. But you, there's no need to pigeonhole yourself. Uh, if you do, you know, you'll probably see a policy coming back again and again for for you to read that, and I don't think you want to do that, so. I think you're on the right track, uh, direct administration to develop a reserve policy and bring it back to the committee.
A reserve policy?
Yeah.
A reserve policy, and then within that policy, perhaps it can just, to sort of assist in the direction of a budget surplus or assist in the allocation of budget surplus, I mean, within that.
And typically, we'll name also the types of reserves you want.
I've seen, I've seen, I've seen surplus policies, I've seen reserve policies, and they 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 kind of cross because the reserve policies will have their funding source being the year in surplus and so there's, there's, there's a, they they cross. There's, there's a lot of common ground in what is policy within the meeting.
And but we also do have some reserves where it's a very specific allocation annually, it's not just surplus, right? And so, yeah, within a reserve policy, it allows us to see all of those things are restricted or are unrestricted.
I would, I would say that I would leave it, I would prefer it to be a reserve policy.
So get rid of the surplus, change it to a reserve?
Yeah, and then as far as the data, I wasn't sure what to put, so.
April's fine.
Okay.
Just didn't want you to make me do this in the next like, six or seven weeks while we're planning a budget update.
No, no.
Perfectly likely.
You're so unstoppable, come on, you're just.
So we have a motion, so it's moved by Councilor Florence, that council direct administration to develop a reserve policy and bring it back to a committee of the whole meeting by April twenty twenty-four. Um, I'm going to ask council if there is any, any questions. If there's no questions on the motion, uh, we can go into discussion or debate. Um, would anybody like to to speak to this? If there is nobody, um, are you ready for the question? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. All right, so now we're going to move on to the amendment to the land use bylaw. Land use bylaw three fifty-four dash twelve. Um, and I'm going to turn this over to our administration to um, tell us about it.
So this actually, this RFP was put together by our planning Diana Marath, uh, which I'm appreciative of because in my short time here as Council Caldwell and Deputy Mayor Potry will know, uh, a great many of the development permit applications we see at MSDA here are for alternate energy projects on residential properties. So this uh, really the purpose is just to redefine uses and update definitions regarding renewable energy within the L U B. So bylaw four forty-five proposes to update uh, the current land use bylaw regarding reviewing permitting of renewable energy systems, um, specifically mounted to roofs, walls of existing dwellings or structures within the town. Uh, so the development of solar energy is uh, typically used in today's world to augment uh, residential power use and selling some access into the grid. Um, in terms of alternate energy, individuals first introduced into the L U B, it was adopted in twenty twelve. It was introduced as discretionary, which meant that each application would then have to go to the MSDA for consideration. And essentially what this is proposing is to make a number of them, and I'll get into the detail, permitted uses which don't require MSDA approval, but considering to be authorized through the development officer. So um, uh, as I said, in the recent past, a number of the applications have to MSDA have been moved onto solar panels, uh, almost all of which have been approved and have been gone through without comment by the neighbors. I will say that one maybe minor um, condition amendment we made recently is that all panels have non-layered surface to eliminate any per fractions of neighboring properties. So the summary of the proposal. So the summary of the proposed amendments, Schedule Two, be amended to delete the use of alternate energy systems individual as discretionary. Schedule Two land use districts be amended to have solar energy system individual roof or wall mounted as permitted use into residential R, small lot residential, SLR, large lot residential, multi-unit residential, manufactured home parks, commercial, business industrial, recreational, public institutional, and transitional land use districts. So Schedule Two land use districts be amended to add solar energy system individual ground mounted as discretionary uses in commercial, business, recreational, institutional, and transitional, and you will note in that that that's not in residential. Those are strictly non-residential applications for ground mounted systems. Schedule Two land use districts be amended to have wind energy conversion systems individual as discretionary use in those residential sectors along with non-residential sectors. And some of the reason for that is each, the wind energy systems are not as standardized as solar energy systems are. We're all familiar with what a solar panel looks like, but the energy systems can be very different in their approach and can actually have some significant challenges in some of our, I will say, seeing a number of them that started out real good and ended up already bad. We don't get gentle breezes in some of our, so that's why that would be put as discretionary. So also Schedule Seven land use district be amended to delete the definition of alternate energy systems individual and add definition for solar energy system individual roof or wall mounted. Solar energy systems individual ground mounted and wind energy conversion system individual as follows. Solar energy systems roof or wall mounted, meaning, and I won't go into the detail, you can certainly read that, essentially solar energy conversion from the sun to electrical, mechanical, thermal, or chemical energy that's primarily intended for the use and consumption on site. Solar energy system ground mounted means really solar panels that, as it states, are mounted on the ground as opposed to using a self-supporting structure as opposed to roof mounted or wall mounted systems. And small wind energy conversion, meaning wind energy conversion systems consisting of a single system that are mounted on the roof or placed in a self-supporting structure. Item six is the title of Section One, Alternative Energy Sources. Schedule Five, these specific standards of development be amended to state Section One, Alternative Energy Sources, Solar and Wind. So as Diane points out, the municipality has the discretion to determine how restrictive it wants to be with processes for all of these types of development within all of their land use districts. The reason we're proposing these is to streamline the development process, speed it up for all of those applicants, which there are numerous in in our municipality, both in terms of time and saving costs for our residential applications, move them forward quicker, cheaper, and easier for all involved. So obviously, this is an amendment to the land use bylaw. If I recall correctly, Diane is proposing that this actually is a formal consolidation, so it's not an amendment to the bylaw, it's actually a consolidation of the new amendments to make one bylaw, which I agree with. As with any land use bylaw, should council approve first reading this evening, we would then be required to follow the advertising process for public hearing based on not only municipal government act section six oh one, but I believe also we have to follow our own advertising bylaw, which is actually more constructive than the municipal government act. So it would take a number of weeks, we'd have to calculate out when this will come back to council for consideration, and most certainly would not be at the next meeting, but likely at a meeting in November.
Great, thank you.
I think I covered all that off.
Excellent. I'll go to council, see if there's any questions on the information presented. Go ahead.
Just in regards to the the bylaw being amended, just a question for the C E O through the mayor. I just, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand. So we're creating a new bylaw as opposed to amending it?
Well, it's amending it by creating a new bylaw essentially.
Okay.
So don't get too wrapped up.
Okay, okay, I was, I was about to, I was about to always think it all the way down that trip.
Don't be that. I'm trying to actually find that because I'm sure I've seen that. And the, and the only reasoning for that is this, that when we, we propose numerous amendments to the land use bylaw, you end up with a base bylaw and then a bunch of other bylaws amendments to it. So if you're looking to dig up some information, you literally have to go through all of those pieces that pack the mind in a consolidated document, that's all. So it's really more of an organizational issue than if there's anything else.
Okay, and so then we have to, with that, we have to also rescind the previous policy, huh?
Yeah, ultimately, these are rescinded and changed in those particular pieces as we go forward, right? So so as you see in item seven of the actual bylaw, the bylaw two five four twelve, which is your land use bylaw, is hereby amended, and the consolidated version of bylaw three five four twelve reflecting the amendment is authorized to be prepared. Right?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I do, I did. Is there any consultation with the fire department on this, or do we think that there's a requirement that they sort of be notified if this? And the reason why I ask this is because when they did go through MSDA, although they are owners and there was sort of that that oversight that ensured that the fire department would be familiar with the addresses that they're going in, and if it's opened up as permitted, would that impact that? The ability for them to know where these are at?
So that's actually, if I might, through Mayor Montana, that's actually a very good question. Have you been on the MSDA previously? No, it is a very good question because there can be some challenges with with chemicals put off if solar panels are involved in a fire, as I understand. So currently, the fire department is informed of all applications through the MSDA through circulation. But this would not allow that, so we would have to set up a separate structure to provide a list to the fire department and keep it updated regularly of all applications that were approved so that they were aware of that. Yeah, I'm not actually sure of the specific chemical challenges that would be faced.
Well, the one big one that I'm familiar with would be, like, some municipalities, the fire department won't attend a home that has solar because of the potential of explosion, battery explosion. And so they they need to know when they're going in, what they're, what they're coming into, right?
Yeah.
What does Debbie hear?
As far as I'm understanding, the energy sources does not permit storage. I guess it does permit it to convert it to chemical energy though. But as mine is saying, the fire department, the main risk is electricity, like getting electrified because as soon as the panel hits, light hits it, it's energized. So if they're watering that, you know, water, electricity.
That's another.
So the emergency disconnect is the the main key point.
Yeah, the emergency disconnect, but it's also better as well to the the panels because the conversion is occurring in a battery system that then heats the house, right?
Essentially.
And.
Yeah, I'm not sure the technical specifics are.
Most of the one application that we've seen have not had any storage though. The storage is.
Sure, I think they do.
I've not, I've not seen any days submitted on that.
In the hundred and fifty page.
I thought there was no battery.
All right, I'm just going to bring it, let's back here.
Bring it back.
Is there any questions on on the information presented? If there's, do you have questions?
Yeah, I guess it's not necessarily on the information presented, but if we give this a first reading, would it be possible to contact our, or not the RC, the fire department and find out if they have any concerns? Possibly inviting them to an open house for their feedback as well.
I think that makes a great deal of sense, and obviously, we are going to have to advertise this municipality white, so fire department will absolutely be made aware that this is what's being proposed. However, they're not planners, so we may have to take some plans, the chief and deputy need to start a conversation about it, so they're clear on what exactly the ramifications of this are.
Great, thank you. If there's no further questions, I'll ask someone to make any questions.
Sure. I move that the town of Colhurst provide first reading of bylaw four four five dash two three.
Is that the right number? I thought it was.
Is that?
No.
Is it four four five?
Four four five dash two three.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So Councilor Ackerman's made the motion that the town of Colhurst provides first reading to bylaw four four five dash two three. Going to ask if anyone would like to debate or have any discussion on this? Sign them, are you ready for the question? All in favor? That's carried, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to now move down to our council reports, and I don't think that anyone, it looks like nothing's been submitted, so we'll just go do verbal reports at this point in time.
Councilor Ackerman's been submitted.
Good job. But we can't see it. I'm, I'm just going to give a little bit of a verbal report here. So I attended the elected officials education program on effective meetings right before the convention last week, and I think I told you all, it was really great. Learned a lot from it, I'm really excited to dig into the procedural bylaw, just to look at efficiencies and what makes the most final sense for us to conduct our meetings, and I think that that that'll be great. So I really did enjoy that one, if you have a chance to take it, you should. It's, it's their newest offering, I believe, so that was great. Then went to convention last week with with you all and, you know, did the regular amended stuff. And then I guess the one thing to highlight is our meeting with the R C M P. I did write about this in the newsletter that was released today, and that we did have a good discussion with them and brought forward some concerns that were expressed, but also learned more about some of the programs that they offer within the community to keep, to keep our community safe. I think one of the biggest ones is that, I can't remember what the program is called, but it's the one with the mental health nurse that's going out with a police officer that they have finally received the go-ahead to actually hire for that position down here. So that will be another support that will be available to us soon. And then finally, I did reapply for the Alberta Municipalities Safe and Healthy Communities Committee. Have not heard about that, I think it usually takes a little bit of time, but I would be happy to join them again this year now that I know what to do there. And I think that that's kind of all that I have for my report, unless there's any questions. If there's not, we'll move on to Deputy Mayor Potry.
Thank you. I still can't actually see my. You never gonna see mine until I get it fixed. Attended a recreation and culture meeting on the twenty-first. We actually discussed the upcoming committee changes, which were, we gave direction to administration for. And as part of that, we agreed since the policy's actually, the committee hasn't actually been rescinded yet, that we would still meet on the nineteenth currently, so that will likely be the last meeting as the committee should come forward on the seventeenth, I believe, so. And I attended the Alberta Municipalities Convention with council and some members of administration, and it was, yeah, wonderful to meet the R C M P as well and make them aware of our concerns in terms of call away time and response time and all, everything that was brought forward to us at our community open house. And hear their concerns with how they can implement and improve, so it was, it seemed like our voice was heard. Of course, change is slow, so, but yeah, it sounds like they're making progress. And then this morning, I attended the MSDA meeting with Councilor Caldwell, and that was funny, funny enough, I don't think they actually have any solar panels this morning, so. But I think they were talking about lots of solar panels. So, yeah, there was, it was an interesting meeting. Of course, with the development officer, position unfilled, we had our planner there, and she gave verbal report to us, I think, hopefully we can get that documented in ten minutes and, I don't get to see, but there was, there wasn't, I don't know if there's any significant names that needs to be brought to council, but, yeah. That's very important.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to Councilor Florence.
Great, thank you. So for my report, I wasn't at our last regular meeting of council, but I did submit a written report for that, as mentioned, and I won't spend a lot of time on this, we were at Alberta Municipalities last week, and it's just a really great opportunity to, to network with with other municipalities and to speak with M L As, including our own M L A, and as mentioned, the R C M P. Just two highlights for me was meeting the premier and speaking about Colhurst with her, talking about some of the things we had going on, as well as talking to an M L A, Shane Detson, he, I had originally seen a presentation he had done for the Highway Three Twenty Development Association, but he does a lot of work with Canada's economic corridor and the economic corridor in our region. And so I was just able to advocate for for Colhurst and kind of keep us in that conversation because I know sometimes we kind of get cut out of it, and it tends to lean towards Left Bridge to Medicine Hat when there's a lot of stuff happening in our area. And then just had an opportunity to talk about the the first Pacific tourism too and how we're right along Highway Three. And so just in a really excellent place to, to continue to grow and develop as we move forward. So that was an awesome conference, and then moving forward, just other than regular meetings, I have an E O E P, so an elected official education program about council's role in public engagement. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilor Caldwell? I'm sorry, Cal. Florence, I was looking around here. Okay, Councilor Ackerman's.
Thank you. First, for recognition, I just time went, I said thank you to City of Edmonton and Alberta Municipalities for putting on a great convention. In addition, just thanks to our C P and the various ministers who took time over their day to meet with the different municipalities in attendance. As for meetings and events attended, on September nineteenth, I was taking part in the scholarship selection committee for South Crowe. So we met and made three recommendations for individuals in the region to receive scholarships in the agribud sector. On September twentieth, South Crowe had a Built Lunch and Learn online, and that was just with Built Left Bridge and talking about giving services and what they provide to the area, and then talking about the area that they cover, which is actually outside of Left Bridge, about two hundred kilometers in radius, so they do cover quite a bit of Southern Alberta. We had the South Crowe quarterly meeting in Picture Butte. We had a presentation from AltaLink about some of the challenges with regards to the energy grid that we're currently seeing in Alberta. And then within that meeting too, we also brought forward the policy changes for the South Crowe policies. Those are going to be voted on in the next quarter of the meeting. As I just have mentioned, we had the Alberta Municipalities to mention Edmonton. I thought that was fantastic. One thing I do want to mention, on behalf of South Crowe, I attended a meeting with Minister Ellis, who's the Minister of Public Safety and Emergency Services. So he was speaking a little bit about crime prevention, and one of the things that stood out to me with what he said is addiction is biological, neurological illness that requires treatment. So when he's looking at stopping the crime in the area, he's looking at an all-encompassing way of approaching that and providing services in the wraparound to help people actually address the cause of it and not just the reaction of the crime itself. So I was pretty happy to hear that. He also mentioned that there's a lot of illegal drugs and weapons coming through the U S border and the U C border, so it sounds like he's going to step up and reinforce some of the capacity to help prevent the flow of the illegal materials there. Then we had a South Crowe that came in meeting online yesterday, just kind of went over financials. We approved the recommendations from the scholarship selection committee there. And then upcoming meetings, I believe the only thing that we really have is the M D P envisioning session on October twenty-fourth, in addition to the regular meetings at this time.
All right, thank you. Any questions? None, we'll go to Councilor Caldwell.
Thank you. I guess I would like to recognize our Plus Fifty-Five Club. From what I've heard, they had a pretty wonderful open house last Wednesday while we were up in Edmonton, so I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that they are working to, to provide a space for our seniors in our community and expand their membership base. And I have also, I attended a, well, around that theme, I did have an Agri Makers board meeting, but I also got to take part in their heritage launch fortieth anniversary party, so that was really kind of quite. So that was really kind of quite, I just, I really didn't have a lot of clothes to wear from 40 years ago, so, I just went and had some great visits and, and listened to some great tunes and stuff. Um, I had the Rec and Culture meeting that Deputy Mayor Pootrey referred to, as well as I made his MSDA this morning, I don't need to speak on that further. Uh, my God, I, I think Alberta Municipalities, um, going up to that, uh, convention, there was a lot of great learning, uh, but this year, I was really happy to attend a number of sessions there. Uh, net zero infrastructure, as well as, um, municipal strategies to support healthcare in our communities, um, and emergency management, and I just wanna just speak briefly on that. Um, they really spoke about collaboration, and whenever there's an emergency that occurs, like the fires in northern Alberta, um, it's wonderful to be able to sit in while they're doing briefing and they talk about what really works and what, what doesn't, and that truly was a collaborative effort. Um, and so there was some great learning to carry home as we are looking at sort of that regional emergency management, um, strategy in our area. I was also very proud to be a recipient of the, um, municipal elected leaders certificate for completing all of the courses. I was not even able to get on stage and collect it, but I'll be getting that certificate. Um, I was happy to be a part of the, uh, the conversation with the RCMP as well, and talk about, um, community safety with them, and talk about strategies that we can, uh, work together in partnership with them to sort of increase that safety within our community. Um, and I believe, um, that is, uh, that's basically it, yeah, we do have some great upcoming stuff. Uh, I, we do have a meeting with LSEO, Green Acres Foundation, we'll be, uh, meeting with them to look at some, um, partnership opportunities, as well as, um, yeah, our MDP on October 24th, and then all of our regular meetings. I believe we are having one more meeting with Rec and Culture though this month, um, on the 19th, to plan some really great Halloween activities. They're, uh, they're pretty excited to get those things going there. It'll be a nice kickoff to, to sit there. Thank you to them, yeah.
Great, then that's everything, thanks. Any questions for Councillor Colber? Go ahead.
No, just one question, um, through the mayor to Councillor Colber, I just had a question about the, uh, the Green Acres Foundation and, and meeting with the, um, the Lethbridge Senior Citizens Organization. So would Green Acres ever come and meet with the Coleryst Senior Citizens or the 55+ as a partner as well? I know there's a lot of focus on, um, Lethbridge, but as we look to expand and see what that looks like, is there a possibility of them coming out here to meet with our seniors as well?
Yeah, and, and so, I guess, just to speak about what that partnership is, it's a regional benefit, uh, because they do have sort of a seniors outreach team that has come up to Coleryst and worked with a number of our seniors. LSEO has a, it's called Systems Navigator Program, and so they have a number of staff that are, it's a well-funded program. They go and they meet with seniors and they help to navigate them, uh, if they require help with, say, taxes or, or ensuring that they're accessing all of the funds available for them, or, you know, sometimes it's around housing or medication management pharmacy, like it's really anything where they're struggling, and they have been out to, um, they have been out to Coleryst and worked with them. And so really, it was about how can we support you in the work that you're doing, and how can we ensure that we can have, um, the possibility of some of their services coming into, uh, Green Acres buildings? And so that would then be a support for all of the, the seniors that are living in those buildings, and those would be Coleryst residents as well as residents in this region. And that's kind of where some of those conversations are.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, so not that Green Acres is going to go in and
Seek out partnerships?
Work out, uh, to, to benefit, uh, a seniors organization, but it's to say how can we expand that Systems Navigator service? And how can we help you expand it better?
Right, okay, I just, I guess, thank you for clarifying, I guess I was just having a hard time understanding Green Acres, that Green Acres Foundation role in that, and I guess some of, some of what's being done there is what's being done by FCSS out here, um, which would make sense, um, so thank you for clarifying.
And, and typically, FCSS will reach out to, to them if they have that requirement. They'll, they'll call them in, and they have Berenjero Warner who's called them into Coleryst to support seniors, because they're specific for that kind of, that kind of, uh, support.
Okay.
Great. Um, so with this, uh, would somebody like to make a motion to receive the reports for information?
And that we receive the council reports for information.
Great, so Councillor Horne's has made that motion. Um, any discussion? If there's none, um, are you ready for the question? All in favor? That is carried, thank you. Alright, so moving on now to our, we have one piece of correspondence which is from FCSS, um, and this is regarding, um, celebrating seniors for the International Day of Older Person, so this took place on October 1st. Is there any questions on this? Would somebody like to make a motion to, to receive this for information?
I'd like to receive the FCSS report for information.
Excellent, so Councillor Ackermann's made that motion. Um, is there any, uh, questions on this? Any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. And now, can we get a motion to go into closed session? Go ahead.
I'd like that we move to closed session at 7:35 PM.
Excellent. So Councillor Horne's has made a motion to go to closed session at 7:35. Um, any, uh, questions? Discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor? That's carried.
And you're good?
I think we're good.
Let's move into closed.
Okay, move this into open. Great. So council couple has moved a made a motion to move into open session at
Is it 8:00 AM?
50:00 PM. Um, is there any questions? Discussion? Ready for meaningful question? All in favor? Carry. And then can we get a motion for the point of stuff?
Sure. I move that the discussions and documents of items 51 and 52 remain confidential pursuant to sections 21 and 24 of Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Great. Thank you. Is there any questions? Discussion? Ready for meaningful question? All in favor? That's carried. And then we do have a motion coming out of closed session. Would anybody like to make this motion?
I make a motion. Um, I move that council direct administration to proceed with the COLAD adjustment as discussed during the closed session and that the documents and discussions remain confidential until the 2024 budget deliberations pursuant to section 29. Information that is or will be available to the public of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Discussion? Ready for meaningful question? All in favor? That's carried. And then finally, can we get a motion to adjourn please?
I move nobody adjourn regular meeting of council editor today.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Discussion? Ready for meaningful question? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you.